I want to tell you a good morning and a big morning greetings from the main ministry. Today, waiting with the cast that obviously we will not too far, we begin again, where we can't talk on our other issues. Department and community affairs, we deal with governance and we also deal with communities. How people they live in the communities. All over, when they find out they reject, look at can't suit the happen. You move soil, shake the soil, there's a break. That place is not to the right place for the useful apps. At the end, when we have for dinner now, and we obviously for work together with the Ministry of Environment, the Ministry of Information, then they help we for giving the kind of visibility for the activities there. What we want for them to cover for me, and let people they know waiting good and waiting bad. And a lot of the time, if we listen to their advice when they come from we, it will help we a lot for protect to environment. So now we all engage in this particular activity today, so that at the end of the day, we will clear the message and go out. And all over the nation, the people they will know say who serious for environment business and the climate change without the faces. I want to tell you a big greetings.
Thank you very much, Mr. Minister, the right honourable Sambal Lamina, for that brilliant statement today. I mean, a number of things then come up. So in order, in fact, even going to the discussions then proper, and I just also add say, when the conversations then they begin, we want to be interactive. So we not just want the panel normal for the talk, 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 which is already listening. Because our wise chances are, we not probably will listen to each other and assure the essence of this entire exercise. Now follow me, listen to each other, listen from within the policy leaders and here for talk. But then also we say, listen to Una and benefit from Una because as I said, very unique. Right, like he has the owner, the owner of tradition, or the community system, but then more broadly generally. The honourable minister talk about collaboration and partnership, very important. They also talk about awareness raising, education for engaged communities, for let people like, I mean, it's not as if that thing they not know they happen before, but the fact of the matter is we need to continue for do more of that. Also, so that people then will know and become more aware increasingly about the disadvantages if we continue for the harm, where environment and our communities there. The problem caused by rain, I mean, I should say this year, this season here, we don't see plenty. Also, we have seen a lot of implications, right, with the rain, they don't come, I mean, the brother they ask for disaster management. I mean, eventually, when the panel discussions are beginning, self doing a first hand experience in terms of the things they waiting don't see, and what they don't get cause for respond to. And finally, the honourable minister talk about the host, who they build. And also, we all one side them for the, all want to only believe and bully them. But with that desire, they also come responsibilities to sound the doa. How the doa, how it affect we in the next five, 10 to 15 years, sorry, devotion and all of that thing they particularly in the years they would decide for doa. So all of that, and they will form part of the conversation, and I just want to finally again say thank you to the minister for his statement. At this point now, we will go to, which I will call the co-hosts. And that's the Minister of Environment and the Ministry. Because now because of them, make, we need get this conversation, right, for see how we can begin now, but then find a pathway for continue then conversations there. And so, it is necessary and important for hearing from the minister himself, then himself can talk to we. The minister, in name of Adjoa Abdolai, you know, my own brother, friend, which he not know that, and I will say for the very first term, the fact that I know him, he be data. Eh, because daddy, when I see him, if I see him now right now, now I'm gonna make a lot of fun. Eh, that man, I always think that as an uncle, and I don't know how to explain to him for the very long time. So, transfer the relationship more or less, and I have a lot of respect for this minister because he has done wonders at the ministry and he continue for do exceptionally well at that ministry. So, thank you again, and welcome, and I will pass the microphone to him for then, instead say a few words to we all, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Environment business. Here is our local government. Deputy Chairman, Wodsi, Deputy Executive Director, NPA, Deputy Director General, NPA. Councillors, village heads, traditional leaders, youth leaders, I'm going to, we can't today, morning. This today, I'm going to talk with Gafa, I'm going to talk, one a camp around the final, and I hope for talk freely. So, I do hope say, we can have the discussion then, all manner go talk, they were saying I'm going to talk with, we can have. Because if we not able to talk freely, some of them problem we are will get, not a hope, get to the bottom of them, for really understand them and for, able for begin for solve them. We can have for exchange ideas, as a mystery, with the work with, we call this then, the Ministry of Information and Civil Education. Because now they have to get, cast message and get out there. For develop ideas there, go and can share it to now. But, we will can share, and once they will not said, give me feedback. Because that's so we can able for improve on the messaging. Because I think say, we all can, we all, we all get the same goal. We, now for protect the western area from disaster, protect the western area from water insecurity. Not just for we, we do now, but for future generations. And for that, for that we able to get the desired outcome, the final we able to talk to each other, we will not move back. Because Boko again, here, it better for prevent the problem than for solve it. Some problem they by it take it cheap for solve it now, now, now we be it, it that. So, government, um, does see to say, we, we're able for upgrade as one government. I mean, you see different MPA, we see council also. And for bring people they come together, so that we be able for discuss how we can prevent some of them problem there. So that just list some of the, you know, problem they wear, I wonder we discuss now today. Or we don't think, for that we discuss now today. Water security, we almost say, this western area peninsula, and in the case for water for western area. Kuma, then our western area peninsula, in currently, where the supply water and water, and they, and all their future a expansion, where they don't plan, all in this western area peninsula national park. So important for that we protect the park. If we want to forget water, of this western area in the future, not to just for today. For we begin them, for we can begin them. If we have to not say, we see disaster they have. Just two or three weeks ago, we see we have another car, where the water not can be, you know, people hosted, place that we could not invest, their savings, just like that they don't go. And some of them, I see we can able for, for avoid. So, it better that we get the conversation, now we talk to each other, then we see how we can able for avoid them kind of problem there. Um, the whole point of this now for talk, to we said. So I do hope say, when all we don't come, when I will contribute meaningfully. Because if not for that, we as well, not able, able for really get to the bottom of them problem there. And I ask you next to tell you, governments will try to solve one problem, create other problem. But if we can all come now, when all, you know, talk freely and give the feedback, we able for, let we fine tune some of their ideas there. There are things say, we can come up with solutions there, we, you know, 10, 15, 20 years down the line. When all would then on our host and say, well, now we all we can, our talu, for solve them problem there. We, daily today, we still the city benefits. So there, I de plead with all of Una, I de make all of Una, we don't come today, for talk freely and make meaningful contributions there, to this town hall. Um, no idea, not a bad idea. They all not talk freely, because that the only way that they will able to move forward. And with that, I will wish, all manner fruitful deliberations. And I do hope say, waiting with the get out of this, our messaging, we go help. Not just the western area, but the rest of the country, for avoid some of them problem there, we will express now, thank you.
Thank you very much, honourable minister. To another, for myself, it's still how we will go for join now. Right, and get the right kind of conversation, we get for do to environment. I mention two things there, with, I think say paramount to him, as the policy lead. But then also to the ministry where he represents, one, now water security. And with water security, plenty of things, I will not say, they involve this business small, small, for special encroachments, also, all of them protected areas, and they were supposed for able for they generate water and keep up for weed. So that not only weed now, but generations to come, we will still able for get access to water. We also talk for sand mining. You know, Mr. Minister, some years back, I mean, if you go like then beach area then, right, then post a line there. Uh, you cannot impact to that sand mining, they don't get, it don't say way, it don't in picking, small, small. And even, some of them, they run and they would be along their face, and they just say, it's sand, sand, not so. And also climate change, that sort of affect them to the point where you see some of them places, they may be cheap, small, small, they go. So all sort of essentially get a responsibility, do not who wait say, I mean, can I go steps down, and I tell you, we go for begin fair way now, for say, how to solve that. Something by that, they go like, I make the minister, and we stop, hmm? And the vision we get, now how we can go for join now, and make sure say, we do the right things there. Get the right policies, implement them, we all buying, right, to them policies then they so that people better for all the environment, people will look after, look for watch out, uh, look for buy, buy round, right, and keep aware. Uh, and so I tell, I tell them very thank you for the comments then they, and the sentiments that they were expressed with all, they look forward to the deliberations then, where I think say, I do would transition to, but then before to transition into them conversations then they are one for introduce the other panelists then, within I am, to me videos left, my brother, John Viojus, where I had the Deputy Director General, National Disaster Management Authority. You know, it's, it's an institution we was formed by His Excellency the President, it's a very dear to us, Manaduo. Precisely because of the challenges that I would see, yeah, uh, when it comes to the environment, climate change, and all of them thing they, uh, to them. How for prevent there, very important, a few weeks back, uh, for in Africa, and he said a lot of things. Where Mr. Seth, now the first step for every area, I'm just wanna say, go benefit, go visit, benefit Saturday, for your some of them thing they. Very insightful, but then also very, very realistic, and that is why you see the partnership between what he do at the Ministry of the Environment, and my own brother, Sambal Lamina, the Minister of Local Government. Because all of them thing they also, they touch directly on now, also, and everybody else, all of them traditional leaders, then we in support for the way they represent, right, they have a responsibility to this particular exercise. And so, I want for welcome you, and then we also get the Deputy Chairman, Graham, maybe don't give the local remarks. I also get, I mean, I'm small brother, at least I guess, my brother in this panel. I mean, small brother, Dwight Z. Chey, my older dinner, it's ages for long, alive, finally don't go on a it range, we there. I'm more than excited for her, welcome, she will be part of this discussion, and then, uh, Mrs. Bean too, then I so, you know, I think, I'm the most important person I have, right, because of, I mean, the voice and the perspective, and all of the uniqueness, what he bring to this conversation. So in particularly, I want for a lot of laugh for her, right, for do I not to do that, so, for do I not to do that, I want for a lot of laugh for her. And so, we go, we will start this conversation, but in start of this conversation, uh, where the fidget man, now grafting, yeah? Alright, yourself, come, come for what's more? Man grafting, um, yourself, I'll be back, you see, in a way, you go for go far alive. Let's see, we started the gap, or let you done. It should say something, not to buy a bad business, not by a very bad, and something, and then you go left now, say, uh, reduce two time, three time, four time, where you? Right, yeah. Uh, we also get, I think, Mrs. Bean, to our earlier tradition, eh? Yes, now being to Mosey, now I'm the project manager now. Now I'm the project manager, uh, is it Wapna? But also, they had the Ministry of Environment, you see, and they had their two function, they two, they were they perform, very important. Not a joke, we there, agenda, I get oh. If the man be hold that position there, we for us, you know, let them pull one, let them leave one, but when I hold on to them, we good to go. We get, of course, I don't introduce the Deputy Chairman, uh, we get Salima Tu, Usmara Tu, Kroma, who I'm the Chair for saying Committee on the Environment, there? There? Welcome, I don't clap for her. No present, here in government, we left for see, we human, and we take front row, at this business, more than welcome that. That's it, I think for be part of the conversation. And then, of course, the other two panelists, there also, there are John Van, the Rogers, and Dwight Z. Chey, Z. Chey, for them, you know, small brother, I'm always there, and big man. So, we will start the conversation, but how, how I know doa? Minister of, Minister of Environment, Joe Abdolai, don't talk for two things. They talk for water security, they talk for sand mining. In addition to that, the other things, then they will not say, central to the two thing, and the water security and sand mining. We get deforestation, we get encroachments, and then water catchment areas there. Uh, but then one other one, they will add into this conversation, which is the protection of wildlife. The protection of wildlife, because, now that, and they all, they made companies attractive. How you protect your wildlife there, and make sure so they set there, they don't pay so good for attract necessarily toys in. With time to develop, with time to generate, they are ready for government, you know, and make government to look to all that means there. We will forget enough money for, and back on, uh, which you will call social protection programs there, and also our development programs there, all of them one in this. So, I want, let we start of this conversation, and I will go to, I will go to my brother and disaster management. Because I think say, it will be very exciting for we all. And then, as the conversation they go on, when I keep in mind say, Una said we get the opportunity for contribute. Hmm, for contribute, right, let Una say, council now, we this perspective, as I don't say, right, and be part of this conversation. Now, I let just the conversation from this side no more to Una, right, because otherwise, uh, we will let you feel very uncomfortable. I should say not to that, the intention and the mindset of the minister that, right, of the environment and the Minister of Local Government, uh, where they decide for can I end up in this conversation. So, I mean, I will start with disaster management, as I see. Uh, Mr. Rogers, in your experience over this period, as Deputy Director there of the National Disaster Management Agency, which you feel say don't pose challenge, in terms of which you see for plan? And then communities, the way disaster happen, uh, we get for do with, encroachments, deforestation, and how that they get impact, yeah, then probably then they, and how Una said to keep coming, right, essentially for for we form a together, but then also for get conversation, or then various communities then they, as to how they is prevent them, right, from happening again.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I want to permission our life, come on, make a big one, thank you very much. I want to say good morning to all the with this task government. Remember, the way they are the height of, we cheat the way they are, they demand them, the new population, it's image yes. It is a gentleman, I want to tell you a good morning, and I repeat you a good morning from the National Disaster Management Agency. This National Disaster Agency make a responsibility for manage disasters, including disaster preparedness, present, prevention, mitigation, response, and recovery on behalf of government for so everyone. Please. The National Disaster Management Agency, now an establishment of government, under the leadership of the President, President Dr. Gillis, Manaduo, where you can say, I should say, for men to get full achievement, in terms of environmental and environmental protection. Make sure say, they give more to the public of his country, close establishment for this agency. The three arms of government have been there for a period time, and it shows say, on the 8th of June 2020, Parliament began for pass the act, then the National Disaster Management Agency Act, will bring into existence the National Disaster Management Agency, which I mean this. On the 19th of November 2020, it's early see the President move further for launch the agency now stick out. And since then, just a week after that, we find yourself with a major disaster, we call, uh, now Susan's King, one of the largest fire disasters we ever caused in the history of this country. Where in fact, we get for this, this, a lot of people, now Susan's King. But coming down to the question, make a few down on the question, uh, Fung Dham, I hope you are with me, that we don't get a serious change in the climate. Time in this country, we get six months of rain and six months of dry. When I find out say, it don't change, that's six months of rain, that's six months of dry, it don't change. Time in this country, they get seven days break, all that don't change, because of the event that happened around the world, who the global climate change. And at this, now if they impact, not only so, but many countries within that world. Because of the global climate change, the findings are a little exceptional. Uh, maybe I zoom down for what they happen currently, according to that, and the question with the chairman actually. Uh, inside Freetown, inside Saro, the other part of the country. Um, we don't find out say, over time, the climate change, it don't change, the weather, the rain they come, at the time where they expect. They change the weather pattern, they affect people they living, it affect communities, it affect land use. So because of that, we see a lot of impact, we see a lot of disasters, we call, in various areas around the country. As an agency, if I know say, inside this country, we don't do a lot of assessment, and that assessment is the point thing I say, we get issues where they affecting this country, one of which, if we get too much rain, if we get too much extreme dry season, there we get water shortage. We don't do assessment, where they show say, in some areas, not at the Ministry of this country, uh, around the month of March and April, we go for find a difficult bit, around areas like where the Dugu, Cambodia, we go for find a bit, for get decent access to decent drinking water. That is starting, we don't do that, and we keep no say, the one way they know at the water sector, don't get gate for make sure say, they able for step up. By showing in terms of borrow holes, in terms of water waste, creation, they will provide decent drinking water for the population, so that our challenge we face. Beyond that, if we they get too much extreme rain, then if I notice the aftermath, then flooding, flooding, it affects many areas around the country. Uh, Freetown also exception, all the areas around the country, considering yesterday, we just get a report that Cambodia district get, Cambodia town itself, they get a major flooding. But that flooding happen at Cambodia, now as a result, transband challenge, you know, the river where they run around Cambodia, they go right inside the Guinea Highlands, and when, even if it don't rain, now Saro, but if it don't rain inside the Guinea Highlands, the water bank in the high of, therefore, a bad for effect, and that night course, they did. We refer to this currently, inside areas around Cambodia district. But beyond that, we don't need to inform sure say, we do prevention, so that disaster not go for at all. So how we do that, so that we don't forget and clear it, the first thing we do assessment. That assessment, if they lead to scientific assessment, if they lead to many areas, and we do scientific tools then, for do that assessment. If I know say, over time, it cannot change, time in this, say, the flooding don't go, people they own this place, but now I'm building for that, I will come to that later on. Now, now, I face it, well, I will discuss that later on now. But in terms of the assessment, if they lead to many issues, the first issue, if they tell me the areas there, when a high risk, when a low risk, when a medium risk. And very sadly, and by graduation, so we have attention as an agency, where government establish, and for make sure say, we pay first attention to highest communities. People who are settled at various areas around Freetown, where we class a high, as high risk. Then areas in there, in terms of heavy, downpour of rain, they bound for be affected, either they in that seafront, or they the office, or they bound for be affected. So the rain actually, we know this, we will see, we get too much rain, the one area at seafront, where they don't do bad construction, then they get serious challenge. Either this says from houses, and then they collapse, and why the house they collapse, Kuma one, many factors. People they don't do land reclamation from the sea, where they don't do land reclamation, they don't put houses in there. Then houses in there, in terms of extreme weather condition, then they collapse, and why they collapse, either this say the flooding, or it can be say, now, now windstorm. Windstorm they protect ya, especially when you get velocity, you bring that buildings, and this is impact on Una's environment. The second, now issues related to sand mining, I'd like to where the owner of this town, government, they make mention of sand mining. Sand mining, now thing where, it very destructive, if we don't construct it, with environmental protection, and with direction, I should say, it will help with environment. But over time, we don't find out say, people they mix sand mine, now wrong places, and because of that, on sand mining, it impact on environment. Uh, it just keep make reference about Laka, Mosai, we sleep overnight, and the following morning, uh, last week, uh, we received one, we did not collapse. For people that don't do sand mining, they are almost undermine the buildings, to the level that, that be the day where you cannot again impact on other structures. So four big company structures, they fall down around Laka, and today, if I know say, I very gloves to, to this country. Beyond that, if I know say, uh, when you take a look at areas, who say, people they don't get negative interaction with the environment, we get stormy channels, who say water flows, we get waters, then waters, they build, they construct, now for a sure say, we get floodwater. But over time, go to those see, we don't find out say, people they don't construct, then they throw in the garbage, then they throw the thing inside, for then stormy channels. And when rain come, they water, they block, and what thing ever happen, if they cause flooding, they water, they go inside human society, human environment, human settlement, and this they cause displacement, which is really, really very bad, they affect people there. Beyond that, if you don't find out say, the issue of deforestation, now another factor where it affects Freetown and other areas of the country. Time in this country, this country, we get to the self, you just made mention of the protected areas there. For example, the Gola Park, the Gola National Park, the Lomi National Park, the Otambar National Park, very part, and then a part, very important in terms of environmentalism for bring money can at this country, where me and you, we benefit also. Or what you don't see, we don't find out say, over time, people they don't do another deforestation, when you look in the dry season, it's mapped inside Freetown, it has mapped by, for the tree. Then you look up the hills, all in the scene are red mud, why? Because people they don't, they don't plant everything, they don't get gold, not know they will, will go for put environment. So, when you talk about the dry, the rainy season, in the rain, it will take time for they will get a kind of a drainage rate, or let grass grow, let the trees and grow, so that we get more protection. The deforestation, it cause impact, because one tree, where they grow over time, it is The deforestation, it cause impact because one tree, what they grow over time, it is spent in years, for four years. They spend a few of years for every, for prevent windstorm disaster. They take a man, a replacement man, very replacement man, where anxious for their money, entire municipal source, and contract him, and expose the population to windstorm, to, uh, windstorm disaster. So and so they take, next year we see, because don't see negative interaction with the environment. Royal Palace say, uh, people they don't, they go stone mining, on the hills, now wrong places, they see, now in the lifetime of the population. Uh, gradually, the minister make mention of the protection of Kuma. Kuma very important, Kuma they construct in 1960, just after independence, uh, just around 1961, after independence. And they wanted for, for provide water for 300,000 people. Now, when you look at the population of Freetown, straight right up to water, looking, over 1.5 million. So, I could take the way you look at the distribution of water, in terms of the facility, and it not change at all. The same Kuma 1960 or 61, now the same Kuma will get, and a limited portion of water, they don't, they get for impact upon the lives of the population, because if we not get water, water not alive. Beyond that, the forest is very important in terms of the way how the, the air will be taking, now the trees are where they inside the forest, where they are around me. Now out of this, something they will, and they got oxygen, now that oxygen will be taking, what you they give out the carbon dioxide. So we get there relationship between we and the plants. So for every cost plant, they will, they will never for the plant at all, now it very challenging. Mr. Chairman, the issue of planting of trees, it very critical around Freetown and other environment, Ussai will get the better areas. I will stop just over, I will come back to you with more point.
Thank you very much. You know, uh, you know, my own brother John Gogias, he, he passionate for the job, hmm? He gave for be noted, for every single platform, I don't go, whether they really talk for the environment, and the work way they do, and the disaster, the way they see, you know say, take the job very seriously, and he very passionate for that. Uh, and so, and I make for any opportunity where he gets, you know, really be able for time and can be scripted, because he get a lot of things where he want for say, and for able for pass on, in your experience, in the hope that we wait there inside there, whom they do, will benefit, and also we can go to our community there, and you know, for, for spread their message there, so that we all go for protect to environment. Uh, but, you know, we talk about water security, sand mining, what I think is in the essence of this, uh, conversation. Uh, then particularly regarding to sand mining, they happen in various communities then. And this area certain, now area where we do say, uh, people in the mind sand, now yeah, sand sand, also, they take a, and all that things there. Uh, La Pa, Tokyo, they place there, they are inside, they are all signing for replacement, hmm? And able for look after the environment, and build the environment back up, and before started, and we can then move to that. I will bring in, Salimatu, Usmatu Proman, who are the chairperson for the committee of environment that is council there. I want for know, since in this young community, in this young environment, on issues that like sand mining, which in your experience, and which the council comes sandbox, as to, uh, their challenges they give, but then also how owner they try for think through, yeah?
Any member of the, yes, something we want for say, right, by way of a follow-up question on your, feel free put your hand up, because I say I want to be as interactive as possible, not just one-way trafficking on mount, yeah?
Okay.
Feel free, and then okay, fine, everyone.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, good morning, colleague. Western area Y District, people in, I want to tell now 2020, 2021. As the chairperson of Western area Y District, Environment and Agriculture, because now two committees. Because Environment and Agriculture, they were the same thing. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I really appreciate this gathering today. Um, you mentioned things on the sand mining. I really appreciate where minister, they tried for about this disaster, and we talk about the protection, how we for protect, um, in water, um, securities, and we get some separate things that we have effects. Uh, and I tell you say, as a Western area Y District Council, we said so happy for see some of the thing that they take place in the district, because they not affect like, where other people, and they affect them now. You mentioned what is happening in Laka, where minister just mentioned what is happening in Laka, that now one of the example of maybe the wrong sand mining, where we get, because we as council, we stop that particular activity, may sand mining not go on now Laka. Because in get for affect the people that we get for there, that are particular side there. And it not really easy, but some people will tell you say now they they live. It will tell you say now they they fear their living. But when it turn out to change this other way, it will tell you say no. But we want for talk to the people from the Western area Y District, on this sand mining, when an illegal, we get sideways legal, we get sideways illegal, where things say it affects for the long run. Where, um, you mentioned on this other side, where, when they talk about this environment, especially the cutting of trees, which is very bad. It affect me right now, for example, it happen at Ome. If they don't space that place, where they don't get the whole people, they will say, yeah, now place where no fight for make they live. But trust me, people they cut the trees, they up later, they build houses. They up matter, now they for mine, and start getting peace. So when it say, yeah, to start for bill, you tell you say, I get documents. As a council, I will go for demolition of their city there. Because when you go demolition, they use and argue, they say you can't blow it, but you know, it's not for the life of the people. Now for you, your safety, say say. So we want some of them gathering, that we need for involve the minister, the Ministry of Lands, because they very, very, imprudently do some of the things there. I'm coming to the sand mining, which is very bad. So somewhere you go old crossing, say, yeah, you not find for pull, um, science, science, so it affect the other people. So they will pull, and the next way they can go be the most, hence the place of clear there. But if we put a secret around this side there, Mr. Chairman, I think say you will help you for the Western area Y District, for that say that don't want to get flooding in this community, that is this street. I would just want for stop here first, because we get for command other panelists, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Uh, you know, of all the panelists that wait on top, of all the panelists that wait on top, the sister, Salimatu, does say something where I think say, suppose of we take away for well. He said before we tap, now Matoome, eh, when I tell you go for mine. Hmm? Before I tap, now Matoome, where if really can, we have to talk, I don't know what thing ever happen, sorry the which of effort take place, something ever happen, job will plan it, number of the come on. And I tell you go for mine side flats. It is very important. Because, I mean, at the end of the day, in some of them conversations there, we said say, suppose we will get informed choices. We suppose for know what you will do. Government regulates, functions can be evolved at local council level. But we don't remember who said, in terms of the place that we will go, some of them team and they, they are putting, uh, uh, the deputy doctor, disaster management. Uh, so we will go for no more, or the first-hand, in the group for duty in terms of what they, like, hands your policy direction. Not forget say, the entry, one minute, three seconds of your contribution. Yes, please. I'm full of the visa, I'm very full of, by the way, Shijiong.
Hey, everybody. Um, honorable minister, ministers present here, um, members of the high table, I stand on the link photo. Um, I want to tell thank you for the convenience of this great meeting. Environment, now with all business, everybody they leave, it's an environment. If it destroy them, they they destroy you self. Now, I will connect for men, the Ministry of Agriculture and Forestry, for men that go there. What thing don't destroy the environment, when to more freely they grow up. We know of DFOs, Divisional Forestry Officers. We know of Rangers, Forest Guards, and every kingdom in this country. Every kingdom in this country, they get a forestry. Every kingdom, they get a forestry, and then they get DFO, they get Forest Guards. Where are they now? Would that get away with all of them institutions they need? Now we go back. Because if you don't go, Ussai, where you buck your food, you just look at somewhere, you go for no, you don't go ever, correct, that is it. Where are the DFOs? Where are the Forest Guards? Now, now them people, and they so wait, and people so, so, if we go back to the old in there, and get every kingdom, forget a protected forest, where they wanted and go there, purely that nobody, no problem, at least touch them. But if you look now, the amount of power, so the way they so that, so it almost pass the population of this country. The power so the way they so that this country. And everybody, now they do no business now, now timber and boat business. How? Timber and boat, boat business, now they want they so, they don't destroy with environment. Let me be at this here, and even with sand mining, the council they get, people there, where they monitor, them beaches for an illegal, sand miners, we get for look into that, let me not say, for forget for things. Now two things that when no water man not go stop, now this war, bridge and water, nobody not go stop her. Eh, I don't put barrier, this is a soldier for him, for attack her, no way in the life. When he come, he they kick and watch her, the other kick, now go and go with her. So let me make sure for say, that things that will be get forced, that institution then, will be get forced, when they protect the environment. Let me bring the camera, that's the millions of people like.
So we take one more of this gentleman. Uh, who can be the, uh, just say. Council of CSC, ministers, uh, deputy chairman, colleague councilors, amen. Uh, Bernard Council of CSC, uh, the climate change chairman, Western area Y District Council, I just want for her to, the sister, we then, uh, we move, uh, together. It's how we Western area Y District Council, it's guy for stop, uh, climate change, or help the environment, follow the good environment. Well, I just want for her to be start. Uh, we have the, we partners, we sort of, uh, we the guy for plant trees, and last month also today, that, that trees, the plant trees, and in fact, all Western area, the man then, who assess to that tree, will evolve, and that he will lead in a supervise. Uh, but, we get constraints, where we want for make this Western area green again, like how we start them, me and Jonobe are born anyway. So we the top of San, Asabi, where you party talk of forest officer, then Asabi, they call them part of forest officer, now, now, the work service employee, as soon as calling, they tell you, but they more again, I can garden, you get. Um, we need for get teamwork, for now we will protect this Western area Y District. Now teamwork, remember our lands. And play, uh, the military and the police, if I had a habit now, for that, for the military and the police there. If they see them, they talk, they, in fact, the west man they way, they go they way, they talking now, not they go they game, because outside they bomb, outside they this, police march, uh, the horn they there now. So the land they way, our government, uh, place them. When we go for go plant there, say there, they will tap the policeman, they will go to your man, they will go beat you. I was detained, uh, for, uh, some hours, uh, to a police station, because we go plant, now one day, yeah, now Jonobe way, the dam there, we go plant second there. Uh, the policeman, they pass when they wash them, call them, then they detain me. So, in land, so they went and plant, when they went and wash place, now for plant yes, we go party. But now when they wash place, land, they want to they move, now for car machine go now, for make good. For them done, for them, they land now for the digital people there. So we need collaboration, but we want for work, in the Western area Y District Council, for them make peninsula green again, so that we get water. But there are people here, who want, they work, work for day together, not work together. And Mr. Matan, say, why they go, say, no, stop there, yeah? They are, then they back me up, because one of government, in the work for government, yeah? They are not enemy to them, God bless you all.
So I mean, uh, I, I, I still will come back to the deputy chairman. Because at the end of the day, I think say, that gentleman is, now he boss this, also, so now he boss, now he get, uh, supervising a possibility over both villages there, uh, Salimatu and this gentleman. So I will still come back to, to, uh, the deputy chairman. But I just say one thing, and I should say, uh, minister probably in closing talks is go, go talk for time. Uh, they mentioned collaboration with the Ministry of Lands. And not say, Minister Jiwo, they work closely with the Minister of Lands, and all that, for a fact, yeah? But the details there, uh, improbable is what we are shown, and now we in closing talks is for all and know, uh, the extent of that collaboration is. It is we to make the Minister of Local Government there, now because, uh, Minister Jiwo, not the work, not the working, actually, relation, not to imagine the work, eh? Otherwise, the work not go done, it not go complete, and because of their partnership with the colleague minister there, the sitting cabinet there the Wednesday, even now down there, they get, uh, their own interaction, and conversation there, on all of the issues there. But for sure, I say, the Ministry of Lands, and integral part of their conversation there, and Minister don't get the conversation there, with, with Minister of Lands and Minister, and will continue, some of their feedback there, obviously, when he goes back to town, uh, it will, will get a conversation there, with the Minister of Lands again, on some of the issues there is. But I will come now back to the deputy chair, uh, for, I mean, and one other thing they want to add. Owner get bylaws there. They got things say, nothing for start, you know, and all of them position there, which one they do, which one they not they do, which in a the bylaws there. How the bylaws there, they help owner, in all of the issues there. Again, my minister, the minister of local government and community appears. I want to say big kudos to you, and, uh, my minister of environment, Minister Jiwo. And also the tycoon, made to the work for a very long time, in terms of disaster management, and security of the districts. Mr. Chairman, you ask a very sensitive question, with the concept today. We look at and say, now developments, by another term, now very dangerous. For me, I would say, environmental impacts is something else to talk about, to the imagination. Sand mining, as we all agree, the Ministry of Environment, first being with the Ministry of Agriculture, but now being split. For me, now one of the main ministry where for keep, we want to allow to be alive. Because without proper management of the environment, definitely, the novels we know, or our life novel exists. Sand mining, for we, it's devolved to local council. And looking at it, council get a budget line wasted for sand mining. But, council, now here, this part of the country, thought I fit that, due to human activities, where they damage the environment today, we say now we get just two place for my, my districts. That is Jonobe and Amanty. But Amanty, looking at the way where it this say. But Hamilton, looking at the way where in this, it is direct the land. We say, through the Minister of Environment, I mean, the Minister of Local Government, we get laws, then we put to him, say, now just once in a week for my, now Jorobe. But due to economic issues, now the district today, people are going all about mining illegally. Council use metro police and use the civilian police for see how we manage the different areas there. But still, I would say this office got here, that people, we don't like this country, they go all around. You know, turning up with others, talk around the area, for see say, the mine, who sign on for mine. For my own area, as acting chairman of the western area who are these streets, I get areas the way, if you say, I want for them to watch us, when I give areas there in terms of managing our environment. One of those areas is Almagranish of laws. When this laws, they not try for like, if you say, we watch at them, one law, not a try for, you know, go against the border law, it's definitely that we not get it guys. If the council get a bylaws, as I've now even asked you to, by next week, when they get gas of different bylaws, environment, sanitation and all others. When they come here for help we in the fight against environment and all and other areas, when the people to council. If that laws there, when we they call, we act there, we will go apply. Now, the Ministry of Lands, at first, they were strictly against some certain environmental policies. Why? Because they have it, they are in the books that we are to follow. That surveys and lands is be placed in the Ministry of Lands. Whilst the Ministry of Environment say, we are responsible for the environment, and they are asked, where you go to that? But are they speaking the same language? Waiting are they coming, so many people entering. Ministry of Lands come and say, this land, they for sale. The Ministry of Environment can say, we need for protect the areas. Ministry of Agriculture come and say, this man in bed, when it determined today by the Ministry of Environment. Now they tell you say, this are the buffer. But if Ministry of Land does say, say, they not tell you say, this are the buffer, then they go back into the buffer, they think they said. So you can find out say, when one law they talk of what it say, then we protect the buffer, coming to the green beds. And other one they tell me say, no, over try for, make if you say, we get development and a country, so we go offer this land. Coming to the beach land. So the Ministry of Agriculture, they tell you about growing, feeding the nation. As I'm here studying, there are issues they wake up, now we take for yesterday, of a certain individual trying to deforest the mangrove. Saying, we need for plants, yes, we need forget swamp land, for plant yes. But at the same time, yes, it's under the Ministry of Agriculture, that we therefore go on with planting and tell for see how we can feed the nation. But here are issues, that feeding the nation, yes, is perfectly correct, but not in mangrove swamp. Because we can protect them and we know it in, the benefits go on there. Wait till we develop to as climate financing, the benefit where they come to move, for the mangrove there, we already know we grow. So in light of that, for me, I not say, you know, the, the problem. I want for say, that sand mining is one issue, where it affects the, the environment today. But if only we can get laws, then when in this, speak to one and all, to other laws them, at the same time, and we try to cover that, it's definitely that we will contain some of the issues there where it got on. So I, I say, that sand mining, now the western area who are these streets, we only get two points, where Jorobe and Hamilton. What I have now, when we hear they start, say for you, going further, we will stop sand mining completely, that's all the areas there. And that only one side, like now they function. But the, the, the human activities, the illegal sand mining, now it causes problem. So if the ministry can come together, and other line ministries for come and help, and see say, we protect, then areas there, it will be good for we all. I thank you. Well, I guess the chair telling them, thank you, I know say, uh, yes, the, the honorable minister want for, uh, say something, uh, in relation to some of the issues there, where deputy chair, I know it is so, uh, minister.
Am I good at all?
I want to tell deputy chairman, I want to tell you. Uh, I don't say they're very passionate, you can see I'm really expressive. The only one I want to say, deputy chairman, I think say, who say the issue they go and leave it to who get the bylaws there? Are there areas there, eh? Now for there, enforcement. Enforcement, enforcement, enforcement. And the council really need for take responsibility for enforce. Would they talk say, now one better than for mine, one day in the week. But what did happen, you have been no say, in Hamilton, he didn't leave. You have been no say, they guess what, where they call dry ground. Dry ground, now outside, it is very close to the mine inside, they just mine and they come back come, mine and come back come, mine and come back come. Then the rest of the other days, when mine is only happen, that's when they trip and now for lose it. That alone don't kill the bylaw. Because that one day they, they came for mine, for all the other days, they don't talk say they fix. So until we enforce the issue of dry ground, that's how they went before, you know, when banks, see mountains of sand, a pattern community. Until we enforce the law, for say, when one go to that come, it protects that law before you come back for council. And that all the inside activities, the conversation, they will get. But enforcement of that, now the dry ground, I mean, on the mine that completely. And as such, the control measure said, let two more sample be mine. And one day they, they came, find they sand. Because they just go take and they come, then the rest of the other days, then they need supply, now outside they need for supply. We need for look at that, deputy chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So you see, oh, I'll, I'll come back, not and up, and then I'll definitely come back. Uh, so you see, uh, there are, which I would like say, different, uh, different challenges. Uh, Minister Seth Don highlights, uh, based on your experience, as you believe now Hamilton, uh, waiting, he also see as a potential, uh, problem and how, I, I, I think say, he also being emphasized the need for more collaboration, hmm, between central government and local government. Because here you deputy chair, and you say, you appear. In order of what he don't say, you appear, like say, you are, uh, less central government come, then they partner, then they collaborate, and say, they can provide, yes, uh, some of the issues there, you know? Uh, which I always say, when local council and central government, yes, you don't talk. For all you know, there is a lot in form of, hmm, there is a lot of issues that they will, uh, in their conversations, and they will, I say, we only come up from the same angle, we see it the same way. Hmm, and we all sort of like, get an idea as well for move forward, and partnerships are in this. You know, and I hope say, this conversation will for continue for agenda and partnership there, uh, in the best interest of the environment and for Masalou. I want for calm, I don't see you. I want, eh, my brother, Zephion, right, let you prepare yourself small. Uh, one of the things that way they grace, uh, in some of them conversations they have, by that gentleman, and by Chief Young also, we talk about protected areas there, eh? He say, he tell the way, then be, we, he be much younger than I am too. You know, but, but he's still young, now maybe he get, Chief Young, only possible way, uh, uh, get the locals to say, young, even at the same. He say, but when he is much younger, then you go to call DFOs then. Also, will be, they will be responsible for protect, uh, the environment and get protected areas there. Now, I know say, in a way, that is what the institution they do, also, national protected, that, and recover the whole country. Now, how you institution will represent? How are they help? Uh, because protecting areas also in touch on environmental issues. Also, that precisely one of the many reasons that we to make, and I get a responsibility to do. How institution they help? Which owner see, based on some of the challenges, now, although he, from, eh, the sister, eh, the brother, who are councilor, from the deputy chairman of this council, which is that some of the challenges that way, owner said they see, and how my institution they help, uh, for dealing with challenges then they, for them also for being proactive, like, in making sure say, some of the issues then they not, if I be happen in the first place. So I wonder if, I just have to say, for, for, uh, we, we did, uh, we in man, uh, that's it. Now you have kind of doing, I'm drafting experience, right? Before, but so tell, before I come to him, man, I should say, his sister said into, I therefore bring her come into this conversation, and then it might, you know, like man, and then for talk last, where is the talk room or now, also depart, so I forget that this conversation now and put our place. Alright, so, Mr. Cheif, over to you, sir.
Thank you very much, uh, Mister Chairman, um, and, uh, members of the ITO. I want for recognize, uh, the presence of our capable, capable Minister of the Environment and Climate Change, uh, honorable Minister Gior, who can, we get for doing the territory and the marine ecosystem in the western area of the National Park. Um, we don't be helping many ways since the establishment of the MPAA. I everywhere somebody mention, they say, they get, eh, eh, directors of forest, forestry, they get, eh, forest guards, they get forest ringers. I just want, for the understanding, transformations that they don't take place, now the Ministry of Agriculture, where they be see the establishment, uh, hopefully, probably, when the Ministry of the Environment longer intervene. And under the Ministry of Environment, we get the National Protected Area Authority, as, and agency under the Ministry of the Environment, we get the EPA, when another agency, we get irrigation agency, all of the agencies there are, they under the Ministry of the Environment and Climate Change. So we get a direct supervision from the ministry. So if, when they talk about the, one of the ecosystems there, when, uh, or one of the parks, and we will talk about Nia Tumi, when at the western area of the National Park, where you know become very much volatile to the activities of the, where the people go, the residents, and where we the people definitely do activities, you know, right? We don't see the reaction of modern nature to us. One, the NPAA now, one of the only authority, when you get in power, for enforce the laws within the act. Now we can demolish without court permission. Now we definitely do arrest, we do prosecution. Now we sees or confiscates properties, we will meet people in a walk now area, without no court permission. So the law will be that power. So if they ask about DFOs or forest ringers or forest guards, I wonder when I know say, the NPAA, when at the National Protected Area Authority, gets them one the way we call forest guards. If we include, uh, look around, we get people like in the forest guard uniform, we are on a map, may they see on that, or say, we get them people there, when and then we deploy all over the western area of the National Park. We get fifteen zones within this western area National Park, where we deploy rangers there, where there is a guide for make sure say, and growth will not take place. But I'm glad you for this meeting, when we ministry call. One, I'm glad when you the chairman of DIA. Two, I'm glad when the council is of DIA. Three, I'm glad when the community people in DIA, Mister Chairman, by a kind permission. One of the factors, where they responsible for the forestation, and improvement of the western area of the National Park, now the community people themselves. That's one. Two, some of the agenda, I don't know what's now, the responsibility where they elected. Then they go and allocate protected areas to people. When you go and do, for do your job, they say, I'm here giving this place, I'm here giving this place. We get a responsibility right now, a challenge right now, at ten, eh, 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 area, and that way they call, eh, eastern bar, then they car go machines, now a protected area, where rangers, they go there, and they get a very serious challenge, and stand up with the people, where they say, now they give the land to ADC. So we get a responsibility, we are monitoring and protecting the protected area of western area, and the one of fourteen protected areas all over the country. But the quest for build houses, people that they go to, they build and places, where the ministry and its agencies, although we do it for restoration. Green Series, now one of those, eh, eh, organizations, they, when they support the NPAA and the ministry, although do restoration. Their resident there, just don't go large, another restoration exercise, now Comfort Bridge, as going out, some of the community people have volunteered to make sure they carry all that responsibility. So therefore, waiting for them to go out for help, under the Ministry of the Environment and Climate Change, that have effect on us, and has prepared by effect, believe me, even we are conscious, every people will stand, when modern nature is unhealthy, and it's not happy. Responsible for the protection of this particular ecosystem there, or the park, when at the western area National Park, and the other fourteen parks there, all over the country. This is not just one of the parks, you know, you residents now, western area. But we get the Campbell Hills, we get the Otanback, we get the other parks and where they, all other places in the country. So if I can talk so far, I will definitely restrict myself to the western area of the National Park, as to the rest, the reasons why this particular forestation be placed in quest for residents, and why community people not help, or definitely support the government, or protect the area. And finally, Mister Chairman, there was a day, who they on demolition, now about, we wanted to definitely move our operations. The community young men and other elders mobilized, my effects, the NPAA and the military, because of the don't move in that protected area. That people will halt the demolition exercise, we engage them, I will call you in general. If you are here, please make me a note say today, and because, uh, we therefore get engagement, we will get constructive engagement and tell them say, nobody is not going to stop this demolition, and we continue the demolition after our other outside committee. So not just demolition, all owner community, they make sure say, we sit off and engage with the community. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, uh, you guys, you know, my brother, uh, we did a super nice two jobs. Uh, I mean, I don't know, I mean, I should say, I do fantastic job, right? In terms of, uh, uh, protecting the areas that are being protected. You know, one of the things that I'm aware of, now, one of the things that I'm aware, yeah, I can't do now, before I start to, Mrs. Petru? You can't, okay. Uh, one of the things that I'm aware of, I mean, I still I do a cast of demolition today. Uh, even though we are supposed for one, hmm, and it is guides, and the guiding for look, we talk about protecting areas, protecting the environment, and, uh, all of the implications, I'm glad, uh, there was a term where we texted, I said, the president, they go, Nada, Da, Guma, also. And the areas, and they see the number of the kind of equipment, or what they have, and they did for protect and other, right? And for the problem of water, water, water business, for them, areas they were supposed for, they will protect. Uh, for the problem of water, water, water business, for them, areas that we suppose for, for generator water, then the whole set set the story, uh, I don't think say, we just want to do for the complaint, we just have to not do we own it. So, I, I mean, maybe it's a certain private conversation, because we have to like before that go demolish. I mean, once I get to my team, you know, like, great, the community, that's what, that there's no, you know, and then, uh, I do for go out in this sense, they should have been, that's what I want to imagine. So, uh, I will take any of you, I agree, and they are just a fan at the park, and it costs my own contribution then to one one minute, you are paid. You, that just about the glasses at the back, come forward. Uh, I do, I get to pick it then, one of the back ten, and you, after so set, not set your standby, I'm good on contribution, I go off one one minute. No, this might not be like, if you go to other person, you know, you don't go for the entire.
I put there a good answer, no, no. I'm, uh, I'm, Crobar, I'm G I, I'm a body production manager, not a M D I. Yes, um, I deliberately stand up for one reason. Much as the Minister go talk about water security, and we are seeing in all the record system, in the heat of it. And deliberately, when they talk on the W A P, now, when at the Western Area of Minnesota National Park, I stand up for make something very clear. I will start from who say the one thing, say, as a result of these human activities, we Dwight just to talk about, hmm? Don't lead to, for me, currently as we speak, even just from the end of the cold, for favor of project institution. Now we treat plant as a result of the bad water they can go. At this level of year, we not for the use much chemical, but one measure now for me, can I know say, we the use almost equal, when to we expect for use at egg, at April. Now we use now, as a result of two areas where they suspect say, they really cause trouble for we now, and glad when you mentioned the Bobo. And the demolition therefore go continued, but Bobo and Mango currently destroy the water. Currently as we speak, the amount of dirty, where they come, where they come inside its plant, a not difficult now for human, managing water. That's not the low side of it all. This one then, when I remember Mr. Ojaz to tell National Popular from the sixties. It all evolved to an extent, we try for add other facilities, system within the city, just so we will able to help my fourteen. Because if you want to a water project, you need ten times the money for develop an electricity project. I don't know from that start what I'm here, now they the group Bumbura, hmm? If you want to do something for water, for free town, as we speak, we need three point six billion dollars. For me, we implement the Free Town Wash Master Plan, where we just launched two years ago. Now that we need, yesterday, that be the last day, for many Chinese, they they hand over giving a new facility, Angola. Where they cover between emergency and Hamilton, waiting for be the total supply for the, eh, that just three thousand cubic meters, I think. In other words, we just cater for a little over fifteen thousand people there, where at least we will manage. But on the side of the Angola supply, they get two subs, it's a minister go, surprise you for most thing, where we are the Chinese they go and source them, as we speak, again, you, we get the house where they overlook in the area now. As we speak, the Ministry of Lands, we don't cater for twelve people, the way they pay them, I call them, like we say, they settle them, now for mine, they settle them, they compensate the twelve people, hmm? The project not be cater for that, because it is charity, they green belt, where nobody does suppose for them, but they don't appreciate them people there by Ministry of Lands. The project we get for pay, they settle their people there, but not to money down for. I want to understand, as a result, we get two components, we get for stop, what not do? Talk that do, and then they talk for there, and they talks, no side bypass, and I call it during the afternoon. We be nobody shout out for also, people that they back us, they know what was happening before. That one time they, they would be a tab, they supply these people that are in town. When I was so, thanks now for make what I know say, after the removal of the cluster saddle from the, the, the protected area, as a result of that load construction, eh? People they rush, go build, just as I read example say, we get house where they overlook, eh, eh, this beware, they all be taking that beware, to an extent, since twenty twenty one, we stop for use the water, national waters. In other words, people them around the Oogu area, or going towards Wellington, that Alentown area, they all hear water. Not, and until recently, we're part of this master plan where they tell us so, we will for gain six million dollars, as a result of that, fuels the way they do, just fuels, when on each house. We go for six million dollars, for me they have been doing now, the Alentown system, that need they go take after one year it moved. So in other words, Alentown therefore continue, for suffer for this water, take twenty twenty. So how long we will go on to you this? Well, my, my I make it now very clear, we get ten downstairs for being. We get ten downstairs for being, the water you, Tokyo, eh, 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 Tothik, Tothik by region very close to Congo, eh, Mokiba, Motem, Hastings, if I Hastings, Mister Minister, they don't take the where. Yes, would you, would anything, this is real, Hastings, consult on. Would they, you, got in there a bit far, but that's.
Yes, so we need the next one.
Anyway, I forget I have no, wait, my fourteen, the part even push towards, the part even push towards, the Mokiba, Motem is.
Hello, uh, I'm, I'm doing, uh, I don't know, we're mainly developing, uh, international environmental. And and to be a speaker as in way, and just on the measure of our climate change, and we specifically to work around climate and environmental issues. And when the colleague just talked about, uh, water management, present, and there's Bobo, to be specific. We they do some intervention, they will do two, two ways, the present guys are talking, we now, with the support from the American Embassy, where we get a support for, and our organization actually they implement, and we also they do climate change advocacy, present the, I think communities. And one of the communities, they way so vulnerable, and I can, I can say this, I know the minister there, and get other environmental specialists in there. Eh, and then Kogo to be specific, and one community that one they way, we go, Bobo and other community, La Ca, the number two. So we basically work on our peninsula, artist there, and if you go to go, if you see how human activities, don't they have good on talent, and this recent, we just can this one month, I, I think they man they are say, they, uh-huh, thank God, they man they are, if you see how we activities there, leverage that place there. You shake here how we, as serial, and see some of these environmental issues, we may take a serious, and I tell you, thank you for one thing, where the, the minister and the environment don't do a very, very, very good job, especially putting, putting their policies and their document together. And that come to me question, where Deputy Chairman, we talk about bylaws. I think, um, the Ministry of Development, the N C P, when at the, the recent device, final, the N C P, when at the National Climate Change Policy, and the N A P, when at the National Adaptation Plan, when at, for me, the N C P is just a framework, yeah? But in that, when at the roadmap, I feel say, we need adoption and popularization, and popularization of this document there so, now then communities there so. If you find out, when I go to other communities as well, you don't even know about N C P policies, you don't even know about anything. So I think say, the Ministry and the other specialists there, we will even take this document and come.
Good afternoon, everybody, all good courses out, you want me? Yes, uh, I'm doing a, it's so far, I'm totally grateful, and.